Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. When it's time, I'll ask Councilman Pat Ryan if he'll do the invocation for us. And the invocation or the Pledge of Allegiance, not the Statue of Liberty, but the Pledge of Allegiance. But preceding that will be the invocation from Pastor Craig Wright of Faith Crossing Baptist Church. Craig, thank you for coming down today. Yeah, if everybody would please stand. Would you pray with me, please?
Father God, we just come to you this morning. We acknowledge, Lord, that today is a gift from you, and we thank you for that. We thank you, Lord, for the breath that's in our lungs. We thank you, God, for the rain that is nourishing the plants and, God, just your many provisions. And we come to you this morning, Lord, acknowledging that we are mere men, women, Lord, very fallible and prone to wander. But we just ask the Lord, ask you this morning, Father, that you would illuminate our minds, God, that you would direct our paths, that you would give us wisdom that only comes from your throne. And, Father, as we think about the Book of Isaiah, Lord, we look into your words and it says, "He walks righteously and speaks with sincerity; he who rejects unjust gain and shakes his hands so that they hold no bribe; he who stops his ears from hearing about bloodshed and shuts his eyes from looking upon evil." Father, we pray that that would be true of each of us here this morning. God, that we are upright folks. Father, that we look to you. Father, that we want to honor you in all decisions. Pray, Father, that you be glorified in all that's said and done today. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you know, the city of Oklahoma City has a wonderful relationship with Oklahoma City University. And from time to time, the fine arts community at OCU puts on a performance that the entire community can enjoy. And today, we're going to get a preview of an upcoming event. They are putting on Puccini's Tour Angelica. And we have Kaitlyn Crabbill. Kaitlyn, would you come up here? Kaitlyn is a graduate student. She comes to us from Ohio. And she's going to be performing Senza Mama. And afterwards, we'll hear more about how you can come and attend this event on the OCU campus. Kaitlyn? Wonderful. And she was giving me an Italian lesson this morning. Senza Mama means without your mother. And you can hear beautifully music like this and much, much more on OCU campus. Tell us when.
It's next weekend, November 14th, 15th, and 16th. It's actually a double bill of two one-act operas. You'll see a French opera called L'enfant et les Sortilèges, The Bewitched Child. And then the second half is Tour Angelica by Puccini. Both will have English subtitles, so you'll know what's going on. And you can get tickets online at OKCU.edu. Search the box office, or you can just show up and get tickets the nights of. 14th and the 15th, next Friday and Saturday, at 8:00 p.m. And then next Sunday, the 16th, at 3:00 p.m.
All right. Kaitlyn Crabbill, let's show our appreciation. Tour Angelica coming to the OCU campus. Thank you so much. Thank you. Well, always difficult to follow the talent from OCU, but we can rightfully do so this morning. As you know, we have over 4,000 employees working for the city of Oklahoma City. And it is quite an honor to be selected as our Employee of the Month. But Carrie Medley has won that honor. Carrie, come forward. We have a resolution. I'll ask the Clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Carrie Medley has been a city employee for 15 years and is an administrative coordinator in the MAPS Office. Whereas Carrie provides administrative support for the OC MAPS Trust, MAPS III Subcommittee and Citizens Advisory Board. And she is knowledgeable in using sire web center, sire minutes plus, and sire agenda wrap-up, which are integral to the operations of the MAPS Office. Whereas Carrie prepares the MAPS Trust minutes, uploads memos and attachments in sire for MAPS and MAPS III meetings, and attends all MAPS III Subcommittee and Citizens Advisory Board meetings. Whereas Carrie Medley takes the minutes of the MAPS III Subcommittee meetings and makes them available to staff members who may have questions about items that were discussed. Whereas Carrie is a stickler for deadlines and makes sure project managers meet their agenda deadlines, which come approximately three times each month. Whereas Carrie Medley willingly helps with meeting room setup for the MAPS III meetings and is always friendly and helpful to Subcommittee and Board members, citizens, consultants, and other meeting attendees. Whereas this council desires to recognize Carrie Medley for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Carrie Medley, November 2014, South Oklahoma City Qantas Club Employee of the Month.
Let's show our appreciation to Carrie. Congratulations. As you know, we have to vote on this, and you're the one that's a stickler to detail. So we're going to have to... Do I have a motion?
No.
And a second? Cast your votes. How about that? It's unanimous. And this applause one more time is for you. Thank you, Carrie. Thanks very much. We're on item three of the council agenda. I'll look for a motion on item 3B through F. These are appointments.
Let me look at a second.
Okay. Comments or questions? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item four is a Journal of Council Proceedings. A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings, and item 4B is to approve the journal. Is there any comments or questions on the journal?
Yes.
Is there a second? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, this morning, there's a couple, starting on page 19. Page 19, item 8B, that's PC 10379. The applicant is requesting that this item be deferred until November 18th. November 18th, again, item 8B. And moving on to page 21, under item 8F1, item L, 2109, Southwest 13th Street. Whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item N, 1840, Southwest 15th Street. Whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item P, 1005, Northeast 14th Street. Whereas that be stricken, that's now occupied. Item V, 2233, Northwest 34th Street. Whereas that be stricken, that's now occupied. And item DD, 325, Northwest 120th Street. Whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right. We'll recess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
Move the item.
All right. We have a motion and a second. There are six items before us. Any comments or questions about the MFA? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Three items.
Move the items.
All right. Comments or questions about the PPA? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convened as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are four items on the EAT.
Move the items.
All right. Any comments or questions on the EAT?
Your Honor, I have a related comment. In our neighborhood, a lot of our neighbors put out the blue recycle baskets, and as the OCT picks them up, sometimes they throw them back in the screech. And I saw one that got run over yesterday and shattered. And so we need to caution them, if they would, to put them back up on the curbs if they get run over.
I will give voice management on that issue.
Thank you.
And speaking of, Mayor, if I may, I've received a few complaints that the little blue containers are not big enough. Have we thought about increasing the size of our recycling pan?
No, but I think, because I think a larger one would be hard to maneuver. But I think we will give you a second one if you so desire. All right. Thank you.
All right. Ready to vote the EAT? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent document.
Move the items.
All right. Are there individual considerations?
Mayor, we have a couple of presentations scheduled this morning.
Okay.
We have the comprehensive plan on, and Chris Varga is here to present that. And then we have the convention center schematic plan. We have Todd Bolt here for presentation on that. Chris?
Good morning. I'm Chris Varga with the Planning Department, and I wanted to note that on your agenda this morning is several items related to the continuum of care. And we thought this would be a good opportunity to just spend a couple of minutes giving you a little bit more information about what the continuum of care is. This is a grant that we receive from the U.S. HUD. It is the largest grant and source of funds that the city has for our homeless program. We have been, we have to apply for this grant each year, and we've been receiving funds steadily since 2009. The focus of this is to, the concept of the continuum of care is to end homelessness and also to ensure that our service providers are speaking to each other, coordinating services, addressing gaps, and trying not to duplicate their efforts. The continuum is a concept that HUD has that focuses primarily on the most severe or chronically homeless, those with disabilities, including mental illness and substance abuse. So this year, we have been getting funding steadily since 2009, as I noted, and this is one of the few federal programs where the funds are actually not decreasing each year, so that's positive. This year, we'll be applying for about $3.4 million. The funds are competitive, and as part of HUD's requirements, we have to have an internal continuum of care board, which we do have set up. That board is made of service providers that deal with these populations that are not directly funded by the grant, such as the Department of Transportation, Department of Human Services, Mental Health Associations. So there's 11 members of that. They actually receive proposals from our service providers each year during the continuum of care process for the services that they are going to provide and the amount of funding they are requested. And the continuum of care board interviews each one, ranks and scores them, and makes recommendations to you for funding. And that's what items essentially O and P on the consent agenda is related to. The use of the funds is for prevention, stabilization services, emergency financial assistance, legal services for the homeless, GED programs to try and get folks educated and job placement skills, outreach to address immediate needs such as food, clothing, blankets, medical care, emergency shelter, transitional housing, which is something that HUD is kind of phasing out and getting away from and wanting to get into more permanent supportive housing and permanent affordable housing. So most of our funding requests with our co-applicant agencies are related on funding, housing, excuse me, permanent housing. And I also wanted to just note that the point in time count this year for our homeless is the one-day snapshot and is standing pretty steady at about 1,480 with 240 of them chronically and severe. That's it. Are there any questions or comments?
I think if I could just make a comment, I had pulled items O and P out to talk about because I think it's so important. You know, at this time of year, each year, I think we talk about this, and the funding that we receive from the city's general fund for these services is very small. I don't know any other way to say it. It's very limited. And so it's wonderful that we're able to supplement in this way and, again, focusing these dollars almost exclusively on homeless, but it's more than $3 million that comes into incredible service providers. And if you don't mind, I was just going to list a couple of them. Hope Community Services, our Neighborhood Services Organization, the Oklahoma City Metro Alliance, City Rescue Mission, Heartline 211, Be the Change. It's a great group of organizations that provide so much to our community, and we're really grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I have just one comment. There are 22 agencies listed on this item O that Matt was talking about, and they cover a wide variety of kinds of agencies. Do we have a program in place to monitor their activities?
We do monitor their activities. We are the lead applicant for the continuum of care. There are co-applicants with us to HUD, but we are responsible for doing the monitoring of these programs, making sure the funds are spent appropriately and allocating those funds to them. So yes, we do monitoring on a routine basis. We're interacting with these agencies, but at least once a year, monitoring, and HUD also does those on occasion.
Okay, good. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Your Honor.
And I'll note that Dan Starnes is here from the Homeless Alliance. Dan, thank you for your work, and please pass along our best wishes to everyone else over at the Homeless Alliance for the work they're doing. Anything else on the consent doc? Another presentation?
We do have Todd Bolt here from Populace to talk to us about the Convention Center.
Well, good morning. It's good to see you all again. I'm really happy to be here today to talk about the concept design for the new Oklahoma City Convention Center. This is an exciting time for you all, and I'm going to present the process that we've gone through and the two options that we've considered for your consideration today. First of all, the design process, we've gone through a fairly lengthy and detailed evaluation of the options for the new Convention Center. As many of you know, we were engaged to recommend the proper site for the new Convention Center, and after we were completed with that, we moved into the concept design. First part of that work was to do some due diligence on the site, and all those items on the left under research are the things that we considered as we looked toward creating options. Then we went into urban analysis, which looked at where the exhibit hall should go, below ground, at ground, and above ground. We probably studied between 30 and 40 different options associated with those three scenarios and concluded that the best scenario to satisfy all of the requirements and desires was to put the exhibit hall below ground. We looked at configurations of the Convention Center component in multiple stories above ground, two stories and single story. We costed all those options. We compared those with your competitive set, and we have come to the conclusion that there are two options for your consideration today. So we are pretty much at the end of our study and looking for your direction. Throughout the process, we consulted a number of stakeholders, which included not only city officials, city staff, elected officials, but also the business and tourism community and customers and operators. That work was essential for us to make sure that what we were doing was appropriate for the city of Oklahoma City. In that process, we defined a number of planning and design principles which we think were really important, and those have been our guiding lights throughout this whole process. The first one was that there should be an elevated ballroom to capture the views of the city, also the Myriad Gardens and the Park to the South. The second one was to embrace the city grid. As you know, the current COC Center is much of a monolith on the site, and the whole idea was to kind of think about how we create connections through the site so that we don't have that situation again. The third one was the park connections. This site is located in between Myriad Gardens and the New City Park. It's a wonderful opportunity to create those connections between the two, and so we thought that was important. Division of shows is more specific to the building itself, but being able to actually conduct multiple shows simultaneously was important. Development opportunities, from the start, we looked at ways to not only encourage development on but also around the site. We actually did a city master, or a district master plan to look at how that would happen. And 360-degree building is one that we've been paying close attention to so that the building is porous enough that it encourages pedestrian interaction at all sides. And finally, the unique visitor experience. All of this is really important, but creating a unique visitor experience is tremendously important in distinguishing you in the marketplace from your competitors. And so that's something that we've been paying attention to. So all of these have been our guiding light. So the first of the options, validation of the concept. We were using the MAPS implementation plan as a guideline to what this project should actually entail. And so to start out with, this is a comparison between the existing COC Center and this particular concept. If you look at the exhibit hall lineup there, there's approximately 100,000 square feet of exhibit space in the COC Center. And I'll have to say that that is not Class A space. Neither one of those spaces really is. In the new concept, we're proposing 160,000 square feet of Class A exhibition space. Meeting and ballroom space, you can see the COC Center has 28,000, and I can't really read that. I think it says 35. Is it? Sorry. It's still light in here. And then the new concept has 40,000 meeting space and 35,000 square feet ballroom. The whole point is that, thank you, that the rentable square footage for the new concept is 235,000 square feet, which falls within the MAPS guideline, as you can see down in the lower left-hand corner. And the square footage, total building square footage is 468,000 square feet. So we're in the range of what the MAPS implementation plan recommended. Now we're going to look quickly at the plan itself. As you can see, the red line that encircles the area in the middle, that's the line of the exhibit hall below grade. The gray area above that, it says Convention Center, is the above-grade convention components, which are meeting rooms and ballroom. We were also asked to locate the future Convention Hotel, and that's along Robinson on the right, and also to provide an opportunity for future development along the South Boulevard edge. Ultimately, this plan would allow us to expand the exhibit halls to 330,000 square feet below grade, running underneath Hudson. So here's the actual plan of the exhibit space, 160,000 square feet, shown in yellow. I'll also note that there is a truck dock entrance ramp coming off of the Boulevard in this diagram with the truck docks along the northern edge by Reno. And again, expansion capacity for 330,000 square feet of exhibit space. And hotel on the right and development on the south. This is a mezzanine level that allows people to move from the lobby up above at ground level down to the exhibit hall. And then the meeting space is 40,000 square feet of meeting space at the ground level along with the main entrance to the building. And you can see a plaza to the right of that that's encircled by the hotel and the Convention Center, an event lawn south of that, which is basically the roof of the exhibit hall, and then future development. Another mechanical mezzanine level. And then the ballroom sits on top at 35,000 square feet. And the blue along the northern and eastern edges denote the pre-function areas. So you can see, you'd be able to look at the city, the Myriad Gardens, and also along Harvey Spine to the south, Park to the south. And then the roof plan. And then here are a couple of building sections that show how this building gets configured on the site. The yellow is the exhibit hall, below ground. The green is the meeting rooms at grade, and the ballroom in maroon is on the top So that was the validation concept. Now the expanded concept. These options were presented to both the MAPS Convention Center Subcommittee. After reviewing these, they recommended that the expanded concept be sent to the advisory board for approval and then on to you all for approval of the expanded concept. So I want to take you through this expanded concept. Again, we've got a comparison between the COC Center and the previous scheme I showed you and also this expanded scheme. So let me make sure I can see this here. So again, the COC Center has 153,600 square feet of total rentable space. The concept I just showed you had 235,000 square feet. This one proposes 275,000 square feet of net rentable area for a gross square footage of 550,000 square feet. Again, it falls within the MAPS implementation plan, a little bit at the higher end. Now, there were a number of things that, when we went through our reviews with the Subcommittee and also the advisory board that were noted that I wanted to make you all aware of that were driving some of the changes of the expanded plan. First of all, there was commentary that people didn't like the entrance ramp to the garage or to the loading dock coming off of the Boulevard and suggested that it be relocated to Walker, actually moves the trucks further away from the site. So that's accommodated in this plan. It changes the square footage mix, as mentioned before, to 200,000 square feet of exhibit hall, 45,000 square feet of meeting, and 30,000 square feet of ballroom space. Probably one of the most important things is that this actually puts the exhibit halls below grade and running under Hudson to the west side of Hudson, which will help us avoid having any conflict with the streetcar project so that you don't have to tear up the streetcar lines to expand the exhibit hall in the future. Also built today, it will be less money than in the future. This also places emphasis on views from the ballroom, pre-function, and meeting rooms, minimizes the perception of the size of the lawn. There was some concern that that lawn was maybe in competition with the Park to the South, and so we looked for ways to make that lawn a little bit smaller and a little bit more intimate. And one other comment was that the building, people thought that the building was a little bit too close to Reno, so we moved that back on the site to allow more transition space from vehicles to the entrance to the facility. So now let me take you through these plans. Again, the red solid line denotes the exhibit hall below ground, and as you can see, Hudson is moving right to the left. It moves to the others. The exhibit hall is on the left side of Hudson. Again, we have capacity to 330,000 square feet of exhibit hall in the future. And you can see the lawn is now a little bit more triangulated. And you can see the lawn is now a little bit more triangulated, actually allowing maybe some space for outdoor meeting rooms in the right weather. There's the spine that connects, the Harvey Spine, that connects the myriad gardens to the garden on the south or the park on the south, and also east-west connection through the site, through the hotel, which goes back to that notion of re-establishing the city grid. Still have room for future development on the site, private development along the boulevard, and the hotel location has not changed in this diagram. And also want to point out in both of these diagrams, these are just concepts. We're not into the design phase yet, so there will be some things that shift around a little bit, and so we will get into that when we actually start design. Now, here's the exhibit hall plan. Again, it's pretty much the same as the previous plan, only it's two-hundred-thousand square feet. We've extruded the loading docks further to the west, and we've created a new truck dock entrance off of Walker to the left there for two-hundred-thousand square feet of exhibit space. Again, another mezzanine that connects the main lobby level to the exhibit halls below. And then the meeting room level, which is also on-grade, is forty-five thousand square feet, a little more space between Reno and the building, a little larger lobby area. Another mezzanine level. And then the ballroom, similar configuration is the other option, but now it's thirty-thousand square feet, same pre-function configuration to the east and to the north to allow the views that we mentioned. And the roof plan. Again, the section's very similar to the first one with the exhibit halls below-ground, meeting space at-ground level, and then the ballroom above-ground. So, now let's talk about the cost summary. So, the validated concept, because we haven't gone into the final design yet, and this is still conceptual, we created a range of costs that we think are appropriate at this level of development. It's a five-percent range, so the validated concept will range from one-hundred-and-eighty-five to one-hundred-and-ninety-two million, falling within the current budget at four-hundred-and-twelve dollars per square foot. The expanded concept, also five-percent range, ranges in price from two-hundred-and-twenty-one million to two-hundred-and-twenty-seven million. So, the difference in the two plans is roughly thirty-five million dollars. Also want to point out in the lower left-hand corner, these are based on 2016 estimates, so we have looked at inflation. That's calculated into our costs. And in conversations with our cost consultants, he's not seeing anything that would cause him to be feeling that that is not a good number to have. So, if there's questions, I'd be happy to entertain questions.
A question about the depth, forty-eight feet below. How does that compare with the current convention center? How's that compare with the sports arena across the street?
Well, current convention center has varying heights, and that's what causes it to be more Class-B space. Some of those heights, I believe, are twenty feet tall. Current--
Other with depth.
Oh, you mean in-depth. I'm sorry. The Cox Center is not far below-ground. Of course, we have parking below-ground, and then also the arena, I think, is twenty-five fully five feet below-ground. And then the exhibit hall will be approximately forty-five to fifty feet below-ground, depending upon how high we make the exhibit space inside. The current standard is at a minimum of thirty feet of clear space in the exhibit hall. Most places are going to thirty-five, so we have some latitude to adjust that.
Has anything been that far below surface before? Is there any other construction downtown that's been forty--
I don't know if there is active accessible space that deep. Obviously, there's some foundations and some things that are down well in that range.
I do know that when the Devon Tower was built, they used a system similar to what we're proposing for. This kind of construction, which is a secant piling system, which essentially blocks the water from around the space with pumping system, and it's a tried-and-true system. It's used all over the place, so we're very comfortable with it. We talked to the contractors that did that work. We've had our own engineers. We've had experts involved in below-ground exhibit halls. We've actually done below-ground exhibit halls ourselves, so we're very familiar with it.
The only thing you might run into is the old riverbed, which, as I know, they remade the Civic Center music hall, and they lowered the floor some, and they had to do a lot of work to contain the old riverbed because it came through there. And OGNIA at one time planned an expansion of their building, and it was scrubbed because of the foundation issues, even with the old riverbed. Now, it may not be a problem in that part of the city, but it was in the Civic Center.
The Civic Center was different because you had an existing structure there that
we were modifying, and so you were trying to fit inside this existing structure. There have been recent constructions with obviously the arena and the Devon Tower, but also the myriad gardens, too.
Forty-eight feet deep sort of bothers me. Not bothers me, it concerns me a little bit. Todd, did you use core samples that far down?
Pardon me?
Did you do core sampling that far down?
Yeah, the geotechnical engineers will evaluate that in detail, and we've actually done some study on that already. We do know that there's potential for sub-grade water. We believe the water table is around twenty feet, twenty to twenty-five. What this does, though, it's a series of trade-offs, and the bottom line is that if you want to accomplish all those planning principles that were outlined, three-hundred-and-sixty-degree building, the porosity, the connections through the site, don't want to see the trucks, don't want to have blank walls, it pretty much dictates that you do this.
No, I agree. A lot of the concerns that people have brought up over the past few years are addressed here. It's pretty impressive that so many have been addressed.
Was there any consideration, Todd, given with some kind of weatherproof connection between the hotel and the connections--
Well, you know, that will be considered, and we have, again, we haven't designed that, but there's an ample opportunity to do that below-ground, also to actually make a connection above-ground if that's appropriate. Typically, we don't like to do that, but we also recognize that weather in Oklahoma can be--
Can be a problem.
Can be a challenge.
Thank you. Thank you, Hon.
I have a procedural question. He mentioned the two options, and we're considering both options, but on our agenda, there's only one option. So, is there any way that we can make a motion to amend this one to the validated and vote on that first, and then if that fails, then vote on this?
Well, why don't we vote on this one first, and if it fails, vote on the other? This is what came to us from the Subcommittee and the advisory board. They deserve a vote. And if, you know, if we're not going to follow their lead, fine, we can, you know, we have the ability to do what we want, but I think we ought to vote on what they presented to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you identified six companies that will need their utilities moved, AT&amp;T, Cox, Chickasaw Telephone, OGNIE, ONG, and Sprint. Will there be a cost to the city, or those will all be privately funded, those relocations?
We have accommodated the cost of those relocations. We believe some of those relocations will be paid for by those companies. I know David's had some conversations about that before, but we have that accommodated. We've identified it. I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of two million dollars.
That'll be part of the land acquisition--
We can cover that cost in our budget.
The thirty-inch--
But if it doesn't, if it does not occur, then you've got a benefit.
Okay. The thirty-inch sewer line, the sixteen-inch water line, the eight-inch sewer line that had to be relocated, that'll all be part of the site prep budget?
Yeah.
Do we have an idea of the cost of that?
I don't, yeah, but I don't have the detail with me today, sorry.
Like a ballpark?
Oh, the last we heard was somewhere in the neighborhood of two to two-and-a-half million dollars total for all the utilities.
And is that, so we have seventeen-point-eight million budgeted for land acquisition and site prep. That's part of the site prep, the two million that you're talking about?
Yeah, I don't, that's not my, that part of the work is not my work, the land acquisition. So, David might--
Actually, you know, site prep can also be part of, that type stuff doesn't have to necessarily be just in the site prep. It gets into the project itself, so it might be in part of the excavation as they go in and excavate for the exhibit halls. There might be some removal on that.
You're correct. That's the measured amount that was put in.
For the land acquisition--
Site prep.
I just want to ask you about contingency dollars and just make sure that I have this right. Our general contingency is about seventeen million, and if we take this action today, we'll decrease it by six million, five million--
Let me get into that a little more specifically.
Okay.
We originally had a seventeen-million-dollar contingency that was with the program when the program was voted on.
General for all--
General contingency. Now, we have contingencies in each of the projects--
Right.
But the program contingency was seventeen million. Then, when the implementation plan was adopted, we added thirty million that was moved from the convention center to the contingency fund, so that went from seventeen to forty-seven at that point in time. We've had extra revenue that's come in to date of twenty-three million dollars, and we have earned interest to date of five million dollars. So, that puts us at seventy-five million dollars. We've taken nine million dollars out for sidewalks that we did a year-plus ago--
Right.
Which brings you back down to sixty-six million dollars at this point in time. If we were to take the thirty million dollars that was originally put in, taking that back out, and the five and the one that's in the resolution today, that would take us from sixty-six million dollars down to thirty million dollars of contingency that would be remaining in the project. I have talked to finance and budget within the last week, and it's anticipated that revenue, additional revenue over the remainder of the project that will come in, will come in in the range of ten to fifteen million dollars, let's say twelve, that's the number they gave me, and additional interest earnings over that period of time will be about five million dollars. So, that's another five, and twelve is seventeen on the thirty, so there'd be forty-seven left over with projected income and interest if we take the forty-six million out today.
So, there's a lot of numbers there, but so those are projections. Some of that is projections, some of it's--
Seventeen of that is projections, sir.
Right. So, but in terms of what's allocated from our implementation plan, we had seventeen million in the general contingency, and then the convention center had a contingency of eleven-and-a-half million.
In the program.
Right.
By the project, yes.
So, why, I guess I'm confused about why you wouldn't take the five million from the convention center contingency as opposed to the general contingency.
Well, because we haven't begun design yet, and we're going to, you know, it's generally not the time to be taking your contingency dollars out. You generally want those for the life of the project, generally.
Right. I mean, that's kind of the point. Why not wait? Okay, so that's, so I've got the total contingency now at about, I have about forty-two million. Now, if you want, if you add in the extra revenue, it's going to be higher than that, but with five-hundred-and-forty-nine million in bid, of projects left to be bid, our contingency would be at about five-and-a-half percent. Is that a level that you're comfortable with in terms of a contingency budget? How does that compare to, say, Project One Eighty or our bond projects or--
Well, I can't speak to those, but for all of the other projects, we have about a six-percent contingency on all the projects, so let's write about where--
So, you feel that's adequate?
Yeah.
I would take issue with those numbers because I think that the numbers, with moderately, our conservative approach on the future revenue coming in, I think the forty-seven million dollar in program contingency on top of the project contingency will be the number after we take, if the council were to take the thirty-six out. And so, you're talking about forty-seven million left on, you know, five-hundred-and-fifty million of construction. You've probably got about eight percent left, I would say, in the program.
And so, you're comfortable with that?
That's more than we've had on MAPS One or MAPS for Kids.
How about the GO bond?
Well, the GO bond's different. We have unlisted projects that are in the GO bond with other projects, so that's a little bit different.
Okay. So, you wrote in here that on March twenty-fifth, you presented your plan to the Subcommittee, and then they asked you to reconsider, and then you listed a bunch of things. Is that a power or an ability that other Subcommittee's will have? Do they have the ability to ask, to study other options? In other words, if the streetcar Subcommittee says, "We'd like you to consider an option, not for a four-and-a-half-mile track, but a five-mile track." I mean, do Subcommittee's other than the Convention Center Subcommittee have the right or power or authority to ask the consultant to consider a more expensive option? Or is that the precedent we're setting for the other Subcommittee's now?
Well, we can ask Tom Daniels, who's your chairman, but I believe the precedent's been set with almost every Subcommittee that we've had out there. Tom, if you'd want to comment on that.
Yes, sir. Well, Dr. Shadid, actually, the precedent was set for us by the council when the sidewalk proposal came forward, and we brought you what we thought we could do in the budget, and you rejected it and sent it back to us and said, "Sort out how we achieve the goals that we told the public about." And so, we made a much longer, a much more detailed plan for the future that said to you, "Here, if you didn't like ten miles, here are a hundred miles of sidewalks you can build, and we'll do it as long as the money stays." So, and then ultimately, you gave more money. So, that precedent was pretty well set for our Committees by you. We understand you all will be the decision-makers, so we're not being presumptuous at all. We thought that when proposals were made to the Subcommittee's, that you wanted us to achieve the overall goals of the MAPS Three projects. And so, when we see that we cannot achieve our goals within the validated plan, then we're just offering you options. I mean, we are not trying to be presumptuous about it, and I don't think I would, so I don't want you to think that we think we have the power, I think was the word that you used. We certainly don't think that. But we do think that it is our job to bring you our best judgment and for achieving all of the goals of MAPS Three, and that's what we tried to do today.
But here's what's confusing to me about the timing, is that we're in the middle of what's been described as a friendly condemnation, and I don't know what that means, a friendly condemnation as opposed to other condemnation proceedings we have, but we're in the middle of this litigation. We have a three-judge panel, which eminently is going to tell us what the cost of this land is going to be. We've budgeted seventeen-point-eight million for the land acquisition and the site prep. What happens if, based on current comps, things that have been bought in Bricktown recently, this is a twenty-two-acre acquisition, which is larger than originally envisioned because now we're trying to buy land to the rest for this expansion? What happens if the judges say this land is going to cost thirty-five million? And now we're twenty million dollars short. Why would we make this decision today before we know what the judge's decision's going to be, which is coming at any time? Why not delay for a month or two or however long and see what the shortfall will be there and then decide whether to spend an extra thirty-five million?
That may not be my question to answer, but I'll certainly tell you what I think. When we started this process, we knew it was going to be a ten-year process, and we knew that things would change, that not everything would cost in year one what they would cost in year ten. We knew that as this went along, we had a process that was, that could adapt to whatever we were faced with. Most recently, we had to do that at the Whitewater facility, and so we didn't say, "Let's not build it." We said, "How do we deal with the problem?" And we brought you a plan to deal with it. And I will just say that personally, I have faith in the process, the judicial process. I have faith in the fact that we want to pay fair market value, and we're going to be paid fair market, we're going to be told by disinterested people what the fair market value is. And however that turns out, I can assure you, we'll work with that to achieve our goals. However, we have to do it. So, from our viewpoint, at least from the viewpoint of the Subcommittee, we believe we're going to build a convention center. We don't think delaying the weight, what each individual piece of it's going to cost is going to help us. So, we're willing to deal with whatever we're faced with when the time comes, and we'll bring you a recommendation.
So, what I would hope that the public understands is that the odds that we will face a shortfall on the land acquisition are high, and we'll find out that number very soon. The judges will decide what that number is going to be, and then that, the difference is what we'll have to pay from the MAPS budget. But then they would have the ability to go to a jury trial and try and convince maybe six jurors that that land is worth even more than what the judges. And if they came in with a number of like forty, fifty, sixty million, that additional difference would then go on your property tax, and it would be added to your property tax without a vote of the people. And so, what I would ask, and I'd let anybody else who wants to speak, but I would move today that we defer indefinitely until we get the judge's decision on the cost of the land acquisition. land acquisition. And that would be my motion. I would move that we defer indefinitely, this, I think is the language that Francis, if you, if you wanted to wait until the land acquisition judge's decision came back in, you would defer indefinitely, and then we could take it up at any time after that decision came in.
For the purpose of discussion, you can't talk about it anymore if there's a motion on the floor unless it dies. If we're gonna continue discussing it, we need to, I second it, and we take a vote on it, go on.
It just seems unlikely that we're gonna wind up in a lawsuit, but it's possible, but it seems very unlikely. I would ask, where do you think the concerns about an escalating budget, Todd, if you'd come back up? There's, there's materials and the, you know, the price of commodities, there's the price of labor. Where should we be concerned going forward? What do we, what do we keep an eye on in a, in a market where there's a lot of construction going on?
Well, certainly labor is one of those. And of course, everyone knows things are getting busier. However, when we asked our cost consultant to look into this, we hired one of the best and oldest cost consulting firms in the world, Ryder Levitt Bucknell, who's been in business over 200 years, to, to participate in this. And having worked with them on numerous projects, they are notoriously conservative. In fact, if I was trying, would try to influence the number from those guys to make it seem like a better number, they would absolutely say no. And I, I believe that the number that they provided for inflation is, is generous and conservative. And so I, I have a comfort level with that. But certainly, in the process of design, there are a number of tools that we can bring to the party that will allow us to manage the costs. There are cost alternates that we can, we can play, design alternates that we can use. There are ways that we can forego finishing some of the space if we got into trouble. You know, there's a, there's a number of things that we can do to manage the costs. And I, as, as a professional with a company that designs large, complex projects all over the world, we do not miss our budgets. It's just a fact. We just don't do that.
Let me ask a question about that. Are we, we're not saying that the, that this is, this is necessary because it costs more. I mean, because of the future cost we got. I thought we programmed that in when we did the budget. I mean, we're saying we want to do this because we want to build a bigger one. It doesn't have anything to do with cost escalation, does it?
Well, that's part of the picture, though, because if it gets, if it gets, becomes more and more expensive, you gotta, gotta figure out how to pay for it or stay within your budget, and there's variables that we look at. One of the big drivers of putting the exhibit hall below Hudson is to avoid having to tear out a new track that you put in for millions of dollars. And also, if you do it today, it's less money to build it today than it is tomorrow. So there are some, there are some advantages of doing it. Not to mention a byproduct of adding that increased space.
I'm, I'm missing you. Is it, is the project on target from a budget standpoint with the built-in escalators, or is it not?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we need to be clear that we're not talking about this for the purpose of a miscalculation in the original budget. What we're talking about is a bigger project.
That's correct.
I mean, it's not, it's not, I think it's kind of a red herring to talk about cost escalation because I thought we'd figured that out. And it sounds like we have figured it out. So we're really talking about a bigger project.
That's correct.
A little bit, I have a concern that when we fell short, I think the sidewalk is a bad analogy because we literally fell short. It wasn't that, that, it came in, we fell short. We didn't allocate enough money, period, not to build a bigger, better sidewalk program, but to do the sidewalk program we promised the voter. So that's, that, to me, that's a totally different reason for increasing the sidewalk budget, and we didn't increase it enough to cover the whole thing yet. We're still, we still took money out of other sources, and we're still a little bit short in finishing it. The trails program was, was designed, at least in the, as I recall, the, the advertising and the comments were that if we didn't do this, we would be 25 years in finishing the trails. Well, so now, to me, if we want a better trails program, we could allocate the rest and finish the trails program. I mean, I, I don't, I just don't understand why this is the only project out of all of them that had, that feels empowered some way to come to us and ask for the money when I can tell you from the year I spent, the rest of the, the subcommittees don't think they've got that authority. Health and Wellness Center doesn't think they have the authority to try to build the 5, because we've talked about 4 or 5. You don't hear any conversation at those meetings saying, "We need to get some more money so we can build the fifth one." You don't hear conversations at the trails committee saying, "We need to get some more money to finish the trail." You don't hear conversation at the, the streetcar committee saying, "We need more money so we can actually build a streetcar that serves people that need a ride." You don't hear any of that. This is the only subcommittee that feel, when, when we fell short with the, with the river, what do we do? We cut the project back. They didn't feel empowered to come to us and ask for another $30 million or however short they were. I, I just think if we had all those projects, if every subcommittee felt like they were empowered to come up and ask for more money, then we could pick and choose what we ought, what we ought to be doing. But why this one? Why this one? This was the lowest percentage of favorite on the ballot. Of all the items on the ballot, this one fared the least. There's argument about how bad it was, but nobody argues that it wasn't the least popular on the ballot. And yet, it's the, it's the one that, that we're gonna try to put more money in. You know, when Mayor Norrie originally had this idea, the one mantra that was out there every time was that it doesn't matter where anybody comes, from out of state or out of the country. If we build these things, they'll be here for us. First of all, the convention center is a step outside that project, that mantra anyway, because it is not. We don't need it for us. We need it to bring people in. So it's a whole different, we've moved to a whole nother area of, of matters that could go on, on the MAFS ballot. This is not, this is inconsistent with the original. And the fact that all the rest of the projects don't feel empowered to come forward and, and give us a choice and say, "Would we rather do this, or would we rather do that, would we rather do that?" There's a reason for that. There's a reason for it. The idea that we called a lawsuit about the land acquisition friendly, when it's no different than any other lawsuit we've ever had, there's a reason it's called friendly. I, I, I'm not gonna be able to vote for any of this today. I can't, I, I never have a, I have yet to have a constituent come to me at a neighborhood meeting or anywhere else and say, "Gosh, I wish you'd build a bigger convention center." Not one, not one in four years of this debate, not one constituent ever came to me and said, "I hope you build a bigger convention center." I've had them say, "How are we gonna fund the O and M on the park?" I've had them say, "The streetcar's not quite what I thought it was." But not a lot of people saying they didn't want it, just a lot of people saying it didn't come out quite the way we thought it was. I've had people come to me and ask me about newer health and wellness centers. I've had people talk about the sidewalk problem. But not one has ever come to me or called me, now, you guys can gin up some folks that'll do that, but, but I have not had one that called me and said, "Build a bigger convention center." Not once. And I, I'm, I, at some point, I, I have to draw the line, and I, this is it for me. We ought to build what we said we'd build, not what we'd, and if we decide to do this, we ought to do it after a competition between the other projects deciding what ought to happen. I suspect that the riverfront people would, the river people would much rather build a bigger, better river deal than cut their budget if they felt they were empowered to do that.
Any other comments or questions, and before we vote on the proposal to defer the, the issue? Yeah, John, do you want to say something? Okay, Meg, and then John, and then Pat.
Well, I was just gonna make a couple of quick comments. One of them is, I think the convention center is for us. I want to talk about all the graduations that we have there, all the meetings that we have there. Our citizens use the Cox Convention Center on a regular basis, and it's a really important part of downtown. And Pete, I don't want to get in a debate, but I am now serving as the council observer on the subcommittees, and I think that now that we're moving into implementation, there is a lot more conversation about, you know, what could we do with more dollars? Could we build that fifth senior wellness center? Had that conversation the other day with Mike Dover. You know, so I, I don't think the convention center is the only committee that is, feels empowered, if you will, or is talking about what we could do if we had additional dollars.
Yeah. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I am in support of the expanded concept for this reason. It was in 1989 when Oklahoma City hosted the National Baptist Convention of USA. It's sad to say that that convention was an embarrassment because the city of Oklahoma City did not have enough hotel space, and our convention center lacked the space. Matter of fact, people had to drive in from Tulsa every morning, every night to attend the convention because we did not have enough hotel rooms. So when it comes to this convention center and the expanded version, I support it because currently, right now, the city of Oklahoma City has only been able to capture less than 4% of the African-American convention market. Again, less than 4% of the African-American convention market. If we had a bigger convention center, we will be able to draw in those national, those regional and national conventions that bring in millions of dollars into cities. Right now, the city of Oklahoma City, we are not able to compete for, we cannot deliver, plain and simple. So I support the expanded version. Now, I do have people who live in Ward 7 that says, "Hey, I, I would love to have my church convention be brought to Oklahoma City. I would love to have my Greek organization or Swarthy organization to have our regional or national convention here." So I, I have it in Ward 7. It may not be in Ward 4, but I have it in Ward 7.
Pat?
I just, we always find reasons to put off things. And this is, I, I think, an opportunity to go forward with a project and keep it moving. And I understand the concern that we aren't, may not do the right project, but this is the best project we can come up with, and it, in my view, it can't be too big. We will have, the bigger it is, the better conventions we'll have, the more conventions we'll have to attract here. We continually have conventions apply here and find out that we don't have the hotel space, the exhibit space, the exhibit quality space that they need for their conventions, and they walk away and go someplace else. We're missing those tax dollars right now.
Absolutely.
And we, we have an opportunity, I think, at this point in time to build something that will attract a serious number of conventions that will be able to provide significant tax revenues for our city. And I know this, the, my constituents in Ward 8 are in favor of this by and large, making it as big as we possibly, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the privilege, where my schedule worked out, to be able to sit in on the committee meeting that the town chaired, where the recommendations were brought forth from the subcommittee. One thing that has been left out of the discussion today, which when I heard it, immediately triggered my mind to say, "We need to move forward with this expanded convention center." And David, if you were somebody, at that meeting, there was a, a list of peer cities and their size of their convention centers, and there was a rating given of where Oklahoma City stood today with respect to our convention center, the Cox Center, on that list. Would you give me that figure, so we have it right?
Yes, I have it. So currently, the Cox Center is ranked 13 out of its competitive set, which I believe is a total of 14.
Okay, so we rank, we rank number 13. Then, there was a, a estimate given of where we would be if we went with the original size of the convent, of the new convention center that were, that was, was being talked about. And where would that put us?
The validated concept, yes. That would move us up to 12 in the ranking.
Up to 12. And then there was an estimate of where this expanded version would lead us to.
And that moves you to 8.
Do I want to be number 13? Do I want to be number 12? Or do I want to be number 8? And to me, the decision was, and it fits into what John and Pat were saying, and Meg was alluding to, I think we need to go for it, and so I'm in favor of moving forward. Can, is it legal to make a motion to, to call the question? All right, to call the question?
Yes, you can call the question.
Okay, so we need to vote on the deferral?
Question. Yeah, everyone's ready to vote. Yes, there's a motion to defer indefinitely.
Okay. Can, just a point of clarification, again, it's not, even though it says indefinitely, it's to defer until the judge's decision comes back, and then you could bring this back to council the next day. There are also outstanding costs, parking, there's no money for that, and then we have bids going out on how much the convention center hotel will cost. So those are large dollar numbers in addition to this $35 increase, $35 million increase that would potentially be back, and we'd have a better idea at that time.
All right, we're voting on, on the deferral for item AV. Cast your votes, and the deferral fails 6 to 2. James, you wanted to speak on the issue.
I have one more question. You know, we've kind of hit around some of the, the edges of, of how the expanded concept is going to benefit the taxpayer. Do we have any numbers that show how, how that expansion, how the extra 40,000 square feet will bring in different and bigger conventions, and how that will, and what sort of numbers does that benefit the, our, our local economy, our tax base, everything?
Yeah, that's a difficult question to answer. Obviously, there, we are precluded from proposing on certain conventions because we don't have enough either exhibit space or quality exhibit space at this point in time. And so when we have a new convention center, we will have X amount of conventions that we can propose on with the smaller concept, and it'll be a larger group of conventions with the larger exhibit hall spaces because of the requirements there. There's other factors that go into it, hotel rooms and meeting room size and ballrooms, and there's other factors that go into it. But you'd have to quantify what number of conventions those are, and then, and then our percentage of landing those. Mike Carrier's here can answer.
Yeah, that might be a better question for Mike. Do we have any specific conventions? I mean, John mentioned one, but that you've talked to, that 160,000 square feet wouldn't be enough, you know?
Yes, sir. Right now, we've done a little bit of research on this. The base of business that we can, can call on right now, these are people that we would actually pursue, based on the 100,000 square feet that we have now. If we go to 160,000 square feet, we increase that base by about 12%. If we go to 200,000 square feet, we increase it by an additional 22%. So about a 30, about a 34, 35% increase by going, by doubling the amount of exhibit space we have. There's a lot more to it than that, though, and, and as Mr. Couch alluded to, the challenge that we have right now is the lack of space to be able to do consecutive conventions or concurrent conventions. You know, we were in Charlotte a few years ago on inner-city visit. They have 285,000 square feet of exhibit space. And they made the comment that they only fill that entire space with one convention about three or four times a year. But they regularly fill the building with two to three meetings concurrently. Or they are able to flip shows. Right now, we have a major problem, Indian Gaming, I've referred to that before. It's a three-day show that takes nine days to do because of the amount of time it takes to load in and load out. That means there are six days in the convention center that we can't do anything. We can't even load in another show or load out another show. The building, for nine days, you've got three days of show and six days of, of wasted space and wasted time. That's what having this larger space will do for us, is allow us to be loading in show 2 while show 1 is going on, or having shows 1 and 2 both in at the same time. To, to Mr. White's comment a minute ago, one of the, one of the aspects that had been talked about was not looking at the cost savings right now by expanding, but future cost savings. And the inconvenience of having to, at some point in time, tear up the street and disrupt the streetcar service in order to go on across, and the increased cost of expansion at that point in time. And I think that's where, I think that's kind of what you were asking about, Mr. White, and just to sort of clarify, what was savings right now, probably not, but it's, it's future savings. And the great part about this, and one of the things... And the great part about this, and one of the things we have talked long and hard about this, we don't know where the industry is going in future years. But having this space, having a solid footprint, knowing where we are and what the potential is, gives us tremendous opportunities down the road to adapt to what business becomes. There's not going to be a reason to have less exhibit space than what we're talking about building. But there may be reasons to have other things in addition to that. And so, having all of this space, having these opportunities and having a defined set provides us with a really good roadmap for where we go in future years, once, you know, literally all of us are gone from the scene. So, I think it's a very wise move, and I hope that council will approve it. Thank you.
Mike, it seems like the number that's missing is the return on investment with different scenarios. I mean, Pat, you're saying, let's build a billion-dollar convention center. Why don't we build a billion-dollar convention center? Then we'd capture a lot more conventions than we do now. The reason we don't is because the return on investment would be so low, and there's so many other things you could do with a billion dollars. So, where is the number that by spending an extra $35 million, we would be expected to get X amount of conventions, and that would be Y amount of impact to the Oklahoma City economy? It seems like we should have those numbers in front of us, and we don't, or I don't. So, to just say that we should just build bigger and bigger and bigger, at some point, it's what else could you do with that money, and what would be the impact of that alternative? Wish we had a billion dollars to spend on it.
You know, I think it's a mistake to argue that, because tomorrow, they'll come back for another 60 million. I think we ought to vote on it and count our blessings that they didn't ask for that anyway. It's obvious that this council would agree to whatever. It doesn't, there's no limit. I mean, the idea, we got to build it bigger. Let's just build it bigger. No, let's don't. Let's vote right now, get it over with, and then hopefully, this will encourage some of the other things, the other, like the river, the other projects that are in the field, that they can come forward and ask for more money, too. The ones that'll matter to the citizens of this city. Not the low-end job creation deal that this is. I've said before, one other thing that's never been asked of me is, please, create an industrial base in Oklahoma City so my daughter or my son can always find a job as a bellhop or a maid in a hotel. Never, never had anybody ask me that. And that's where 95% or 98% of the jobs that we're creating here are. Let's just vote on it and count it lucky that they didn't ask for 75 million more.
All right. If we move to the rest of the consent docket, any comments or questions there before we vote? Because we're voting on the entire consent docket when we vote.
We'll vote it separately.
Okay. Yeah, John?
Quick question. This item is in reference to 6L. Again, 6L. Will we receive, if Focus Federal Credit Union receives this $2 million from the Department of Treasury, will we receive a status report?
Aubrey, can you, can you talk to us about that? Chris Vargas back, very nice.
Sorry, Chris.
That's all right. We won't have, say that one more time.
Okay, now, if Focus Federal Credit Union receives this $2 million from the Department of Treasury, will we receive a status update in reference to their activities in the economic distress in underserved communities?
I can say we can ask for that. They're not obligated to share that, and that discussion hasn't come forward, but I think they would be willing to. They approached us to try and have a partnership and work forward together on projects in this area. So, I think they'd be willing to share that information.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And then, okay, that's it for item number 6. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yes, Meg?
I did, and these seem a little bit irrelevant after all this other conversation. But 6AZ, I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, one of the other really unique things that we've done, working to try to eliminate or to at least solve some of the homeless problems, is to create a homeless outreach team within our Oklahoma City Police Department. And our hot team, they've done a fantastic job, but an anonymous citizen came forward and donated over $27,000 to be able to provide a van for our teams so that they could go out and work with these folks in the streets. And so, I just wanted to, I can't, I don't know who, and I can't say who, but it was an anonymous donation, but I really am very grateful for their willingness to step up.
That's really generous.
That great.
Yeah, John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to recognize the sciences, excuse me, the Science Museum Director is here along with the Zoo Director, some other folks in reference to 6BA, which I do support. The Science Center Museum is redesigning their entrance and exit, making some great improvements in the adventure area. So, I do want to recognize them for being here. Again, that's item 6BA.
Yeah, needed improvements, we appreciate it. Thank you for bringing this forward to us.
All right, yeah. Thanks. Is the Britton Road expansion, it keeps getting delayed, so I was just kind of wanting to see if Eric could let whoever's, anybody's watching, what are the reasons for those delays?
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. There have been some delays that have been experienced on our Britton Road project, and I had the opportunity to actually update the neighborhood last week on Monday night at Wiley Post Elementary Schools. So, there has been some community involvement and interest in that, but we did have experiences of some delays of a few utilities. We also ran into some delays with some environmental soil contamination that was near the 7-Eleven that was there. The good news is that all of those have been recovered. The project's moving quickly forward. The north two lanes have been paved, and so traffic has been moved to those north two lanes. The south two lanes are underway. The water line's complete, the sewer line is complete, and we're expecting a completion of the entire project in the spring of '15.
Okay, thanks. All right, first, let's, the request was to pull item AV, so we will vote on item AV separately, and this is the convention center proposal from the advisory board.
Are we doing that first?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right, well, I'm going to vote yes, but it's only because I like the validated concept better. And so, if we would have voted on the validated concept first, I'd have voted yes, it probably would have failed, and then I would have voted yes for this. So, really, this is a yes for the validated, for the validation concept.
Understand.
So, that's, you're just explaining my vote.
Okay. Voting on item AV, cast your votes. It passes 6-2. Now, ready to vote on the rest of the consent docket? We already have a motion in a second.
I'd like to make one comment on AK. This is a compliment to our Oklahoma City Rehabilitation Facilities. The HUD gave some money to the city of Moore for rehabilitation, and they recommended to Moore that they, the money be shifted over to Oklahoma City so we could administer it, too. I think it's a compliment to our people who handle that kind of program. I just wanted to pass that compliment along.
Okay. We're now voting on the rest of the consent docket. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, on to the concurrence docket.
Move the item subject to individual consideration.
It's like 15 items on the concurrence today. Any comments or questions on any of these? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. We have several zoning cases to deal with today. The first is an ABC issue in Ward 6 at 1100 North Broadway. Meg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is, you know, a piece of the really exciting development that's happening on the north side of 10th Street, both on the east and the west side. We've got a restaurant going in on the west side of the street, and Sidecar Barley and Wine Bar on the east side. There were no protests at the Planning Commission. Is anybody here that wanted to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'd move approval.
Second.
We're voting on item 8A1. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 6701 South Rockwell. It's currently AA agricultural. It would become an I-2 moderate industrial district. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. If the applicant would come forward? Could you give the council just a brief overview of what has gone on on this particular project? Because I want to make some comments after you're through, David, if you would.
Certainly. David Box, 522 Calcore Drive. This is a case that's been in the system for quite some time. My client initially filed for a residential use for this property. We had some protests that were from the Chamber. We went and met with them. And due to a unique setting in the comp plan, this was designated as something called employment reserve. And based on that, they were going to have to protest what we were applying for. So, we then went back to the drawing board. My client has since come back with an industrial application that meets with the employment reserve and all the other elements of the comp plan. Planning staff now recommends approval, and the Planning Commission recommends approval for this industrial zoning application.
The reason I asked David to do that, this is going to be, I think, a situation which we're going to deal with more and more of in the future as we go through the Plan OKC process, because the landowner obviously has some rights. And his initial reaction was he wanted to exercise those rights by putting in a very nice residential community that happened to touch on the land that FAA uses. And so, the Chamber of Commerce got involved because it was, as David said, designated as an employment reserve. The Chamber got involved, the Planning Department got involved, the Planning Commission got involved, the school district got involved. They wanted it for residential because they had some desires to expand their population of students in that area. The, of course, the landowner had a play in it. FAA, as I said, got involved. But through working it out, sitting down, the landowner's rights to do something with his property that he could still feel good about, and then to move this into the area of the comp plan at the way it was at the time, where the Chamber of Commerce, FAA, all those folks thought it was a good idea, it was a classic way of cooperation of how to work around it. But the reason I bring it up, I think we're going to find more of these in the future as we try to balance property rights with the plans that are crystallized. So, thank you for your applicant, for his patience. Thank you for all the parties that were involved. If the council has no questions, nobody has signed up to protest, have they?
No, sir, and the easement has been submitted.
And the easement had been submitted. I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8A2. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 2121 Westwood Boulevard. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would become an I-2 moderate industrial district. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone here to speak on this item? This is a situation where this property's been used for industrial uses for over 30 years. It basically is an intent to bring the zoning into alignment with the present use of the property, and our staff recommended approval of the application, so I'd move approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 8A3. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A4 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 7525 South Styles. It's currently R1 single-family, it would become an I-1 light industrial district. Pete?
Does anyone sign up to protest? I'd move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8A4. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A5 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 229 Northwest 60th Street. It's R1 single-family residential, and it would become an I-1 light industrial. Ed?
Has anybody signed up to speak?
No.
This passed unanimously, and city staff, I'd move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8A5. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A6 is a zoning case in Ward 1 at 1050 North Morgan Road. It's currently AA agricultural, and it would become an I-2 moderate industrial district.
Is the applicant present? This is on Morgan Road. It's almost exclusively I-2 along the whole mile stretch, so it's certainly compatible. I think there's going to be a manufacturing plant, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Of drilling equipment?
Yeah, down on drilling tools.
Yeah. So, it's certainly compatible, but you asked for the emergency. Why do you need that?
We were scheduled to be here October 22nd and got continued, so the owner has entered into a purchase and sales agreement with a buyer, and in order for them to meet their deadlines, they would, they just request that the I-2 be effective immediately so they can move forward, get any permits, and try to break ground beginning of the year.
Okay. Well, if there's no questions, I move for approval.
Okay. We're voting on item 8A6. Cast your vote.
And then the emergency?
Yeah. Second on the emergency?
Emergency.
Cast your votes on the emergency. Passes 8-0. Item 8A7 is a zoning case in Ward 1 at 701 North Kilpatrick Turnpike. It's got a series of different patterns today, R2 medium-low residential, I-2 moderate industrial, I-3 heavy industrial. There's also a PUD involved, and it's all going to become an R1 single-family residential district if approved. James?
Yeah, as you can tell from the map, it's just kind of a continuation of an already approved residential zoning. It is interesting, because this is in the middle of kind of an industrial area. But certainly, there's no reason to deny extending that development, so I would move for approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 8A7. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A8 is a zoning case in Ward 8, I'm sorry, Ward 5, at 3900 Southwest 149th Street. It's currently RE2 moderate industrial, and it would become a AA agricultural district. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 8A8 today? Yes, come on forward. Are you the developer?
I'm the owner.
Okay, we will need your name and address for the record.
It's Bill Craig, and my address is 2920 Southwest 149th Street.
All right. Councilman Greenwell expressed that he was supportive of your project. You want to tell us more about it, though?
Yes, sir. It was zoned industrial for a sand operation. We're returning it back to agriculture. We'd like to build a house there. We've been held up for a couple of months, so the request, if it's approved, would also be, make it effective immediately so we can begin construction.
All right, is there a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, thank you.
I think there's an emergency.
All right, vote on the emergency. Passes 8-0.
Thank you very much.
Item 8A9 is also a zoning case in Ward 5 at 330 Southwest 104th Street. It's currently in a simplified plan unit development district, and it would become a new spud if approved. Is anyone here representing this issue? Yeah, come on forward. And we will need your name and address for the record.
Morning, Jason Spencer, Crafton Toll, 214 East Main, on behalf of the applicant.
And again, Councilman Greenwell has expressed his support of the project. Would you tell us more about it before we vote?
Sure. This is an SPD application, as you said, for a five-acre tract on the south side of 104th Street, seeking to allow personal storage. Developers met with the neighbors, come up with a plan that, to our knowledge, addressed all their concerns, and the Planning Commission recommended it for approval. We'd ask your approval today as well.
All right. Is there a motion?
Yeah, second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Item 8A10 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 1122 Linwood Boulevard. It's currently R3 medium-density residential, C4 general commercial, I-2 moderate industrial, and part of it's in a spud, and it would become a new, no, it would become a new spud if approved. Meg?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Our friends with Love Link Ministries, Marilyn Spark, and I think her board chairman are both here. This is the old New Way Cleaners Building down on Linwood, and Love Link Ministries is doing a wonderful job serving the community with job counseling and training, daycare services. They have a food pantry in conjunction with our regional food bank, office and retail space, and so this spud was recommended by the Planning Commission. There were a couple of TEs involved, and I think the most important that I appreciate the most is the applicants agreed to eliminate any electronic messaging signs down in that neighborhood. So, I would, there were no protests either the Planning Commissioner here, and I would move approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 8A10. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A11 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 8320 North May Avenue. It's currently a planned unit development district, and it would become a new spud if approved. Ed?
Has anybody signed up to speak?
No.
Passed Planning Commission unanimously, I'd move for approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 8A11. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8B was deferred earlier, but I missed the new date. What is the date? November 18th. So, if you're here for item 8B, council will review it on November 18th. Item 8C is up for final hearing today, and this has to do with our water impact fees.
Move the item.
Any comments from council today before we vote? All right, how about a motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8D is a public hearing. This has to do with a police issue on utility theft. Council was introduced to this item recently. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 8D today? All right, how about a motion then to move it forward?
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 8D, and it passed unanimously. Item 8E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8E? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8F is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8F? All right, how about a motion?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8G is a resolution talking about the indebtedness of the Water Utilities Trust, and Craig Freeman's here.
Thank you. This item authorizes the Water Utility Trust to convert short-term commercial paper debt into long-term revenue bonds. One of the methods that OQUOT uses to finance their capital improvements plan is the revenue bond program. And the structure of the revenue bond program is to use commercial paper on the front end of the financing plan, and then ultimately to refund that or to go out long on with revenue bonds. And so that's what this authorizes us to do. This item authorizes the sale not to exceed $95 million. The actual amount of the sale will be determined when we're closer to the sale date so that they can fully refund the amount of commercial paper that's outstanding. The plan right now is to sell the bonds either in December or in January, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions for Craig on item 8G?
Craig, what kind of rates are we paying on the commercial paper, just out of curiosity?
Commercial paper, I think, is running between like .15% and .2%, so very, very low rates.
All right, we have a motion on this item? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8H has to do with the resolution adopting the city council priorities from the council workshop.
And those are the new, we had the strategic planning session about five weeks ago. Subsequent to that, we came up with the new priorities, and probably more importantly are the new measurements that we're looking at on those priorities. And I know councils all had a chance to look at that. Pete or Pat, do you want to talk a little bit about the education measurements? Because I think that's something that we've kind of left in an open stance right now, waiting for the school district to come up with.
We talked to the school district, to the superintendent. He's intending to develop some measurements. He wants to do it with a broad base of people so he gets consensus from the constituents to do that, to adopt these measures. And that process is just beginning right now. Ultimately, we may want to look at our measurements here, make sure they align more closely or closely to the.
Yeah, or adopt what he's.
Or adopt what he's done, one or the other, do something like that. Anyway, we put down some measurements we thought were valid measurements. It's the kind of information we can readily access, so we can document it pretty carefully. But these may not be the measurements the school board adopts, and if they are different, we'll just make some arrangements later on.
All right. All right, we have a motion on item 8H?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I, understand we do not need executive session?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion then to pass item 8I? Is there a motion? Okay, cast your votes on 8I. It passed unanimously. Item 8J, I think we do need executive session.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're voting to move item 8J to executive session, and that motion passed unanimously. Item 8K, understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right. We're voting on item 8K to move it to executive session, and it passed unanimously. Then item 8L, understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes on 8L, and it passed unanimously. And then item 8M, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
How about a motion there? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8N is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under either of the items listed under 8N? All right, how about a motion then to move those forward?
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item 9?
Second.
All right, cast your votes, and item 9 passed unanimously. And item 10 is items from council. We have some that have come from the council. And item 10A is our first. It comes from Councilman Ryan and has to do with cyclists.
Mayor, hoping to improve the safety of our bicycle riders? We've got a lot of them out in the streets nowadays, and we need to do what we can to protect them. And part of it is a repeat of what appears in the state statutes, and the other is, matches up the requirement for spacing between cars and bicycles. So I think the action would be forwarded to Traffic Commission for their review. I would move we go to Traffic.
All right, any other comments or questions on this item?
Second.
All right, and this is to, is this to send it to the Traffic Commission, or is this to put it into effect?
This is to send it to the Traffic Commission.
Okay, all right. Voting to send it to the Traffic Commission. And it passed unanimously?
Thank you, Your Honor.
And item 10B is an item that's being introduced today, and Councilman White is the sponsor of this, to kind of repeat the council scheduling that we've had in this year, where we meet every other year between the previous council council meeting and the first of the year. Any comments or questions here?
No.
All right. Item being introduced today, a final hearing will be set for November 18th. Cast your votes, and this item moves forward. And then item 8C is to look at the City of Oklahoma City State Legislative Program. This comes to us from the Legislative Committee. Is there a motion?
Quick.
Uh huh, this is the state program.
Okay, quick question. As it relates to the priorities under support, opposed issues, item number one, support retaining tools for economic development such as tax, increment finance, and successful tax credits and job, and quality jobs. I just wanted to make a point that under tax credits, that we be mindful of the affordable housing tax credits, and we need to make sure that it's safe. Because what happened last year, the state passed affordable tax credits. They created their own tax credits on the state level, but however, it excluded Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Oklahoma County, Tulsa County, and Cleveland County. So I think we need to revisit the issue for its affordable tax credits because what happened, the legislative, they originally, Oklahoma County, it was supposed to be statewide, but they changed the name to rural in Oklahoma County, Tulsa County, Cleveland County was left out of there. So that particular tax credit allowed for matching funds. So I think that we just need to watch tax credits issues this coming up cycle.
Okay. Jim, can you make sure that the Legislative Committee is reminded of that at their next meeting?
We will do so.
Okay.
I have another comment.
Yeah, sure.
On local control, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that local control does not stop at 23rd and Lincoln, that it extends Oklahoma City as well, and make that point over and over again to our legislature until they can understand it.
Yeah, it is one of the priorities that we have, to maintain the local controls that we have. All right, we're voting to accept the Legislative Committee's state legislative program.
Move the resolution.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Then item 10D is a similar item, but this is for the federal legislative program.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this goes back under, I guess this could be considered under item number six, support economic development and local grant programs such as C, DBG, and home funds. But I think we need to add in there the support of extending new market tax credits, the extension of the empowerment zone, and the extinction of affordable tax credit. Currently, right now, HR 4365 and Senate Bill 1133 deals with those items. So again, those are successful programs that I believe helps to promote economic development in Oklahoma City. So I just want that to be added into item number six.
Okay. Can you make sure we discuss that at our next legislative committee meeting?
We can do so.
Okay, thanks, John.
All right, thank you.
All right, ready to vote on item 10D. This is to, we need a motion then on 10D to adopt the federal legislative program from the committee. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And we're still on items from council. So James, do you have anything for us today? All right, Ed, Larry, Pete?
I read the memorandum about the panhandlers, and I thought it was very well done. I appreciated it. I thought it took a very realistic approach to what we can do about it, and I'm just, whoever wrote it, I want to.
It's a complex issue.
No, absolutely.
It really is.
And one of the things I liked about it, Meg, I know you were the principal of momentum behind it, was that it inspired to people to communicate to the churches that they're really not serving a greater good many times by helping people who are asking for services instead of allowing them more information about what services are already available. And I appreciate that. I want to appreciate Pete.
I thought it was very well done.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. This really is a complex issue, and I think we're trying to tackle it this time around from the standpoint that we recognize how generous our citizens are, and they always want to try to help. But we're not necessarily helping. In fact, we're probably hindering by giving money at street corners. And so the idea that we could make real change by working with service providers, I think, is the message we're going to try to get out. So I appreciate the support. I'm really excited. Kristi Jaeger, in our public information, of our public information staff, has done a fantastic job. And I want to be really clear that we've had collaboration and input from all of the service providers, very large group to start with, and then a much smaller sort of focus group to help us. And they're going to provide a lot of the input for the PSAs that we run. It's been a really rewarding process.
Uh huh, John?
I haven't, I haven't read that. Can somebody email that to me?
I'm sorry.
That memo?
Yes.
Can somebody email that to me? I haven't, I haven't read that.
It should be on your desk.
Oh, it was on my desk.
I think there's a copy on your desk, but we can sure get you another copy.
Okay.
I had two other quick things, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the Miller Neighborhood for hosting me at their neighborhood meeting last night. There was a difficult incident, actually, there was a shooting in Miller on Friday night. There was a death that occurred, and the neighborhood did such a great job coming together and reacting to it. They were very positive and upbeat. Things like that don't happen in Miller Neighborhood, and they're going to do their best to ensure it doesn't ever happen again. And I also had the opportunity yesterday to spend some time at U.S. Grant High School with our Teach for America, who are Lance Tackett, who heads the statewide effort for Teach for America. That program, since 2009, has grown from zero teachers in our, in the state to 500 Teach for America teachers. Over that time, they've begun to ramp up and begin to provide leaders in the district. We've got some assistant principals that came from the TFA program. We have a couple of principals. We've got 44 other young people moving up into leadership. And I think it's really rewarding to note that most of these young people, I think, come into the program with a two-year expectation, and the passion to give a great education to our young people catches them so that many of them are transitioning into education careers or into leadership positions in our district. And it's been a huge success, and really want to thank them for their commitment to State of Oklahoma.
Meg, if I could add something to that, I've been participating in a series of meetings in which city-county health is involved, and they're talking about a project which involves the public schools and UCO and OCCC, where we would do a, we would try to replicate what Teach for America does nationally. We'd try to replicate that in Oklahoma City, where we would try to recruit Oklahoma City students, I-89 students primarily, that grew up in an inner-city school system, help them with their education at OCCC and at UCO, with the understanding that if they came back and taught in Oklahoma City, they would get all, they'd get their bills paid. And it's a, it's a, it's kind of a unique thought, it seems to me, but they have, one of the concerns they have is they have people that they hire many times that come from situations other than an inner-city school system. The culture shock of, if you grew up in Hobart and then to teach in the Oklahoma City system is substantial. They're trying to find people that grew up in that kind of a system with the idea in mind that that might, they might get more longevity and more understanding, and they'd be successful earlier in their teaching career. I think it's really, and it's a takeoff on the great experience we've had with Teach for America. So I just thought I'd add that.
Tom? Pat?
Just a cautionary note, Your Honor. I don't mean to be a negative thinker, but the price of oil has gone down to about $80 a barrel. It gets much lower than that. I'm afraid some of our Oklahoma producers may shut their production in, stop drilling, which in turn will mean they'll lay off some workers, which in turn may have an impact on our budget as we go forward. I think it's something we watch very carefully.
Yeah, noted. All right, city manager reports?
We're going to start with Michael Williams, who's been here all morning, learning about local government.
Learning about Oklahoma City, yes, yes, thank you. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm delighted to come to you this morning and give you a bit of a state of the Oklahoma City Museum of Art. As Mr. City Manager mentioned, I've been here about a year and a half now, and I just wanted to tell you about our year that recently ended, and also give you a preview of our exhibition season to begin. We started our season last year with a magnificent exhibition of Heaven and Earth, masterpieces from the Glasgow Museum in Scotland. And then we continued with an exhibition by one of the most famous, famous and notable American artists, Chuck Close. We also had a fantastic exhibition created for us by an installation artist, Lisa Hoak. And then we followed that, concurrent with that, we had two exhibitions, two of the most notable American photographers, Ansel Adams, and a Brett Weston collection that has come to us through the generosity of Christian Cassie and the Brett Weston Archives, making the Oklahoma City Museum of Arts holdings in Brett Weston Photography, probably the largest of any public institution in the United States. We've had two family days, courtesy of Sonic, America's drive-in, and we're attracting about 3,000 participants to the museum on a Sunday for each of those family days, roughly 80% of whom have never been to the Oklahoma City Museum of Art before. Our educational programs continue to be a model, not only for Oklahoma, but for the nation. We have an Alzheimer's and dementia program for patients and their caregivers called Making Memories. And our Art After Five program, the museum is open until 10 o'clock every Thursday and weather permitting. Our rooftop is open, and we attract anywhere from 500 to 700 participants during, given the right weather conditions. We've capitalized the energy and excitement over Art After Five into our newest membership group. These are the OKCMOA Moderns. They are a young professional group of the museum. This is the steering committee on the roof that you see in the image before you. They set the very modest, they were launched in July. They set the very modest ambition to have 15 new members for this first year of operation. They are now well over 100 members. They have set an ambitious series of programs and events for the year, and we continue, we hope their membership will just continue to grow. What's been the result of all of this excitement and energy around the museum? Well, our attendance is up 30% over the previous year. We've had three wonderfully successful fundraising events resulting in a budget surplus for the last year, and we've seen an increase in our membership, up 29%. So what's in store for this year? Well, we just finished a fantastic exhibition that debuted its North American tour here in Oklahoma City, Gods and Heroes, Masterpieces from the Écol de Bazaar in Paris. Right now, we, so we've gone from French to Chinese. We have an exhibition, really the first major exhibition in the United States to showcase that young generation of Chinese artists who were born after the Tiananmen Incident. And so these are artists who are working on a global scale. It's a sprawling exhibition, much like China itself, and it takes up almost two full floors of the museum. In the winter, we will have the Vermeer Girl with the Pearl Earring on display at the museum. Well, not quite. This is a fake. And we're showing an exhibition called Intent to Deceive: Fakes and Forgeries, including this magnificent watercolor which made its way to the Oklahoma City Museum of Art as the result of the forger that you see on the left, a forger named Mark Landis. We also will date, will be debuting Andy Warhol's Athlete Series in the spring. And probably one of the most exciting exhibitions ever to come to Oklahoma City will be this exhibition on the work of Peter Carl Faberge. This will be 271 objects that is coming to us from the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts. It includes four magnificent Easter eggs. These are two of them, which were presentation pieces for members of the Russian aristocracy. It includes this picture frame with a photograph of one of the Grand Duchesses, which was included in the inventory after the Bolsheviks murdered the royal family in Ackerinaburg. And that is the original photograph in the frame. It also includes a number of works that show the output of the Faberge workshop, such as this Icon, which was produced for a member of the aristocracy. Exciting to note that the, that as we build our reputation locally, our reputation regionally and nationally is also increasing. In two weeks, I will be participating in an expo called Meeting the West: Exhibitions from American Museums, which will be taking place in Nanjing, China. The Oklahoma City Museum of Art is one of the few museums in the United States invited to participate in this expo, and we'll be looking at opportunities for bringing Chinese work here to the United States, and also sharing our permanent collection with museums in China. Now, if you're getting the idea that the Oklahoma City Museum of Art is a very busy place, yes, it is. And I just want to share this brief video with you. Let's make sure that's...
There are many different people who come through the doors of the Oklahoma City Museum of Art. Those looking for inspiration, those looking for community, those looking for fun. Whoever you are, you've got a place at the Oklahoma City Museum of Art.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you're doing. Yes?
And then we have our, we've completed our IMSA Care signup period, and Doug Dollar's here to update us on how that went this year.
Yes, September was our open enrollment month for IMSA Care this past, as it is every year, and the results were fairly positive. In fact, only a little over 1,000 customers changed their election, either in or out, and the net was actually more people coming into the program than left the program. So that was a positive month for us. On the back of the report, though, you can see the trend. What we're seeing is a decline in single-family participation in the program, and what that seems to be occurring from is, as people establish new service, either from moving into the area or moving between houses and re-establishing their utility service, they're not signing up for IMSA Care at the same rate that they are currently participating. And so, we'll be working over the next few months with Utilities Department and with PIM, Public Information and Marketing, to see what we can do to help encourage folks, to let them know about the benefits of IMSA Care, to see if we can stem that decline a little bit. But even with that decline factored in, our $3.65 rate per month that we charge will be sufficient to cover us at least through fiscal year 2017 on our support for IMSA and the cost of providing medical, emergency medical service in Oklahoma City. So, good news, this program is still continuing to function. The new contract that IMSA put in place for their provider, because of that lower cost, has allowed this $3.65 rate to continue for several years longer than we had anticipated originally.
Doug, how does our participation rate compare with Tulsa's?
Tulsa's is a little bit higher. They initially, when they began their program, would put people back into the program each year, and they had to opt out.
They had to opt out every year.
And now they've changed that to match up with our model, that once you make a decision, that stays until you make a change. So I would suspect that theirs will continue to follow us, but it'd be worth following to see whether they're making, whether their participation rate is declining at the same rate or not. We'd probably need a few more years to kind of see how that sorts out there.
Okay. Comments or questions for Doug? All right, Doug, thanks.
Thank you.
Two other reports, who'd be happy to answer questions on? Doesn't look like there are any. All right, Citizens to be Heard, we have a pair that has signed up to speak, Samantha Bender and Tess Hardison.
Good morning. I am Tess Hardison, and I brought with me Samantha Bender. We're with the American Heart Association. Right now, we're leading a childhood obesity prevention initiative here in Oklahoma City. So we're really excited to bring, to bring that to the city. As for working for the American Heart Association, we're constantly reminded that cardiovascular disease is our nation's number-one killer over cancer, over any other disease. But the good news is that that's preventable to disease. We know that by eating healthy, those risk factors can be really reduced. And as you may or may not know, Mayor Mick Cornet has signed a proclamation declaring that tomorrow is National Eating Healthy Day. So we encourage you guys to share that on your social media sites, to eat healthy yourselves, prepare healthy meals for your family, however you would like to celebrate National Eating Healthy Day. Most of us have the luxury of going to the grocery store, preparing a meal, or if you're busy, like me, going to grab a rotisserie chicken from Walmart and throwing some vegetables in the microwave, but it's an option for us. It's still healthy, it's still accessible. What I do want to bring attention to today is the fact that many of our Oklahoma City residents don't necessarily have the option to eat healthy, not on National Eating Healthy Day, or many other days in general. A lot of our citizens live in low-income areas, or they live in areas that are not easily accessible to these types of foods. Because they don't live in these areas that are easily accessible, they don't have access to these foods, that contributes to a lot of diseases like obesity, like diabetes, like cardiovascular disease. Many times, they find their foods in convenience stores or fast-food outlets, and we know that those don't always have very many healthy options. So with that being said, we at the American Heart Association would love the opportunity to be a resource for the city council, mayor, or city manager, to just be a resource for you guys. We have some wonderful ideas on policy implementation that could help change this and add these healthy foods in these lower-income areas for priority populations, communities of color, and, like I said, lower income. So please utilize us. We will be in touch with you very soon, because tomorrow is National Eating Healthy Day, and so we will be in touch with you. And thank you so much for letting us bring awareness to this issue.
Thanks for your work. Tomorrow, National Eating Healthy Day. Y'all are duly noted.
In that regard, I attended a dinner together, and I think Meg was there, the, where they gave awards to the best ideas for food and health-related projects. One of that I thought was fascinating was, in Tulsa, there's an entity that operates out of a van-like, and they're, they're a market, and they have, they have fresh fruits and vegetables and fresh produce, and they have a regular schedule, and, and they, it sounds like that might be a way to reach some people that, I wondered if there was anything, anyone knows of in Oklahoma City that's similar to that? Is there, is that, I would think the heart folks would be interested in that.
Yes, we actually just attended a summit where we learned all about that program, and they are a resource for our program here in Oklahoma City. We have a little bit of a different idea to go about solving this issue. Right now, we're getting some input from convenience store owners, also community members, churches, and things like that. So, like I said, we will be in touch with some other policy ideas with that, but that is something that we are considering along.
Well, that, you know, it seems to me the bigger, the biggest problem in nutritious food availability is not grocery stores, but it's transportation.
Absolutely.
You can build, you can build a big grocery store. I ran into Councilman Pettis last week at a grocery store in my ward at 59th and Walker, and he commented that that was the closest grocery store that he could find. I live 19 miles from there, and it's also the closest grocery store to my house.
Absolutely.
In my ward.
Yeah.
And I think the idea, this truck idea is, really has some promise, because even the local produce things that are put into neighborhoods that don't have access, you still have to be able to get to the produce sales place in order to buy it. And we, and we don't have the kind of transportation system that makes it work. So, any encouragement that you might give someone to start something that would be a neighborhood operation, where it would drive up and down the street. The video they had in, at the dinner, looked like it worked. I mean, it looked like it was really a good idea.
Uh-huh.
Anyway, just...
Yeah.
So...
We need to look into that.
The idea behind that, what they're actually trying to do in Tulsa, it's not meant to be a permanent idea. It's meant to get community members riled up and to put stores, or to get healthy foods in the already existing convenience stores that don't have these healthy options, is to get community members kind of riled up to establish these types of things. Because chances are, although we may not have a grocery store within, I mean, I live a good, at least 10-minute drive from a grocery store, and that's a lot, especially if you don't have transportation, if you're walking, and if you've got kids, we have lots of families that just don't have transportation, like you said, to these places. But chances are, there is a convenience store or another small store in that area that they're being able to walk to, or even just a short commute to drive. And if we had healthy foods in these types of places, just think of how many people would be able to get, you know, their healthy food options that way. So the food truck is definitely something that we are considering, but as well as establishing those permanent healthy options into our communities, so...
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
We have executive session, we'll be back.